Okay, we'll come to order. Today is the Wednesday, May 4th, 2011, regular meeting in the Glendale Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Landrigan?
Here.
Commissioner Lee is not here. Commissioner Shitz?
Here.
Commissioner Yasayan?
Here.
And Chair Person Kane?
Here. A report regarding posting of agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, April 27th, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Comments or corrections to the April 20th meeting minutes?
Yes.
Please.
On the roll call, it has Mr. Yasayan twice. He, I guess, arrived at 5:12. I don't know if that's true. I do know that I arrived at 5:28 and I'm not on.
All right.
So probably...
We'll make that correction.
Have to let Mr. Yasayan verify his arrival time. I don't know.
I don't even remember. I think I arrived a little bit late.
I think you were there at the start. No, no.
Were you there at the start?
You were here. There was only one missing when we came to order.
Yeah. It says during the beginning.
Okay.
Any other comments or corrections?
Change I saw.
I move the minutes to be accepted as changed.
Have a motion seeking support?
So...
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Shitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Yasayan?
Aye.
Chair Person Kane?
Aye. All right. Oral communications. As happens about once every two years, we actually have a card. Mr. Milano?
Yes. There's oral communication.
Thank you very much, Chair Kane and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Herbert Milano. Thank you very much for acknowledging my occasional presence here during oral communications. The last time I came here was probably originating out of the same topic that I bring today, and I took the freedom to hand out a couple of documents. One document that, I guess, this past March commemorates its 10th anniversary is a report on the Blue Ribbon Panel on the area of Parks Recreation in Open Space. It's an evaluation that was done 10 years ago to address the significant shortage of parkland and addressing the fact that, according to this report, that the city has not been fulfilling many of its planning objectives. And since it is the purview of this commission to look over to see how the city is adhering to its land use element and the various other different elements that partake with regard to the use of land in the city, I figure I bring this up to your attention. The issue that I have is something that is pertinent to many of your decisions, and that is that oftentimes you're being, you have to consider projects in recreational planning areas, generally recreational planning areas 5 through 10, which are the ones that I'm very much concerned about, that have the greatest efficiency of parkland per thousand residents. The documents that I handed to you is just three pages to show you the disparity that we have, and it is my hope that when future projects come before you, that you consider the impact of these projects on the use or on current available parkland, and also to address the fact that there is a significant deficiency that makes many of these projects conducive to a further evaluation of a negative declaration as it pertains to sequoia. So what I like to start with is by showing you this particular diagram. It's available on the city's website under the Quality of Life indicators, and the silhouette represents 1,000 people, and the tree, every foot of the tree represents one acre. So as you can see, for recreational planning area 2, there is adequate parkland very close to the goals of the city, which are six acres per thousand. This is 5.9 for the particular size of the silhouette. But if you take a look at recreational planning area 6, of which you'll probably make decisions today, you'll see that is .64 acres per thousand. And then if you look at the other planning area 10, which is in the center of town, is .017 acres per thousand. That's half an acre for 32,000 residents. Now, this particular planning area has not had a single square inch of additional parkland in the last 30 years, and yet I've seen approvals of multifamily buildings all over the area. And that is of significant concern to me. It's of concern to me that sometimes even the roads are not resurfaced as required, and I've seen that on new development. But my concern is, is that I'm trying to encourage this commission to pay special attention to the goals that the city has had in multiple documents to which are being referred to in the Blue Ribbon Commission report. It says on item number 12, "Current zoning and division laws for commercial, retail, residential, and industrial development do not adequately provide for open and green space." Item number nine says, "The sudden portion of Glendale has experienced significant population growth." That's 10 years ago, as I mentioned earlier. And that is what I like to bring to your attention, that it is my hope that this commission would firmly, should we say, lay down your recommendations firmly to ensure that before developments are being approved, that the city has proven that it has already taken measures to adequately address the issue of parkland. I was faced with a similar situation a few years ago, for which I followed with a lawsuit against the city in order to try to ensure that parkland would be adequately addressed with regard to the downtown specific plan. It is my hope that we don't have to resort to lawsuits to address this significant shortage, and of course, I'm appealing to this commission to pay special attention to this issue, even though nowadays we do have the, an impact fee that is being addressed to multifamily housing, but I'm looking at the results. Do we have the results? Do we have the actual parkland? And if you were to look carefully at the record, it isn't there. And it is my hope that this commission will take that up seriously in any future development that comes to you for multifamily housing, specifically in recreational planning area 10. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. I guess we'll move on to zoning appeals. We have an old business item. It's Standards and Setback Variance Case PCUP 2010-014. This was continued from March 16th, 2011. The location is at 1017 Cumberland Road. Before I carry on much more with it, my understanding is the applicant has requested a continuance?
Yes, the applicant has requested a continuance to the first week, I believe, in July? In the first meeting of July 2011.
What's the commission feel about it? It's up to us whether we want to hear it or not?
Do we have any people here who want to speak?
Anyone? I have no speaker cards on it.
Staff doesn't recognize anybody from the audience as being the applicant or the appellant.
Which is the same person.
That's correct. I know the homeowner was a big issue, but that's correct.
All right. Commissioners, what are your feelings about it? Do you wish to continue or hear it this evening?
I'm okay continuing.
I'm okay continuing. It just seems odd to me that, I mean, this is not something new. I'm wondering what the delay is, what the problem is. They would know from the very beginning that they want to get public input, so I don't know what's changing over the next month and a half, two months. I know, I believe it's important to get that, and if there was some delay. Do you have any idea what the issue was?
The email that staff had received, "We are currently conducting extensive neighborhood outreach on our project. We feel it's important to receive direct feedback from those residents in the immediate area that are most impacted." As you know, neighborhood and community input is very important to any project. We will not need additional time to complete our meetings with the neighbors. We are scheduled for the Planning Commission appeal for May 4th, 2011. Please continue our project until the first meeting of July 2011. This should give us sufficient time to complete our meetings.
All right. I just had a question. I don't think I have a problem with it.
Staff, I'm sure there's nothing booked that far out yet. Okay?
That meeting's open.
No elements to, no elements that are going to start clogging up the calendar?
No, at this point, that meeting's open.
Okay. Ms. Landrigan?
I move continuance of Standards and Setback Variance Case Number PCUP 2010-014 to date certain July 1st.
Second.
What do you believe is July 6?
That actually, I'm sorry.
July 6?
6, thanks.
July 6.
July 6.
July 6.
I have a motion seeking support?
Second.
I believe you did say without further notice, right?
Without further notice.
I thought I heard that.
I thought I said it.
And I think you did, actually, so. We have a motion, support call roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Yasayan?
Aye.
Chair Person Kane?
Aye. On a vote of four to zero, Standards and Setback Variance Case PCUP 2010-014 is continued to the July 6th meeting without further notice. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7, New Business Alley Vacation Case 150V. This is an alley located south of Mission Road between Glendale Avenue to the west and Colby Drive to the east. The applicant is the city of Glendale, and the proposal is to vacate a 12-foot wide by 190-foot long alley located in the R-3050 moderate density zone, PPD, precise plan of design, and C3, commercial service zone. The vacated alley will revert to the property owners on either side of it. The recommendation, excuse me, from staff is that the Planning Commission find and recommends to the city council that the requested vacation of the alley be granted. Mr. Baxter, overview, please.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make one notation. The application, my error, the application was actually from a Mr. Steve Kay of AGMS Corporation. So that, instead of the applicant, the city was the one who initiated the condition for the applicant to vacate the alley. You pretty much read everything through there. Sort of a few things I'd like to add. In our analysis section of our staff report, what has triggered this was a standards and use variance back in 2005 for an enlargement of the existing skilled nursing facility and subsequent design review board in 2006, both which were approved. There's 33 onsite parking spaces. Real briefly here, try to put this so that it's all in the same orientation. Here's Mission Road at the top, Mission Road at the top, Mission Road here, and here's the parking spaces. The addition goes, here's the existing, this will be the addition. Here's the alley in question, right there. Previously, before this went through, there used to be some old bungalows, some garages right through here, little houses, and you could park like this. Now that this parking lot's coming here, this is returning to a landscape planter type of use, the alley was basically useless except for a power pole located at its terminus. And so at this point, vacating the alley and giving half back to this side, half back to this side, this returning to a residential use, this being a commercial use, and there'll be a, the city engineer's office is working with the applicant on an easement to access the power pole back here through the parking lot. This will be returned to the individual property owners either side. There's no real use for that alley. No one is accessing anything, and the easement accessing the power pole is pretty straightforward. The city staff feel that the proposal was consistent with our general plan. We noted about the land use element and the circulation element, and once the alley is vacated, we'll remove it from our inventory. Our recommendation, as read by the chair, is that the Planning Commission recommend to city council, because they're the approving body, this body is a recommendation body to the city council, to recommend that the city council approve the alley vacation. We have two motions on, two conditions on that motion, which is at the, is attachment number three in your staff report package, and condition number one, we want to add the Director of Public Works to the city attorney as approval bodies for this easement that we'll be passing through. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward as you see it. That's pretty much my presentation. I'll be glad to go through any other information. It's pretty straightforward just now.
Any questions for staff? And I have basically up to three speaker cards. I'm not sure if anyone wishes to speak. I've got, appears everyone is associated with the project. Well, I'm not sure about Mr. Baker. It's just an if needed for you, but I presume you're part of the, quote unquote, the team. So between Mr. McPherson, Mr. Baker, and Mr. Kell?
Kay.
Kay, thank you very much. I'm continuing a long and uninterrupted streak of mispronouncing names. That appears that it will end this evening, but nonetheless, I kept it intact. Do you gentlemen wish to speak on the vacation?
Just very briefly, we're very grateful that you're hearing this tonight, and if there's any questions, that's why we appeared tonight, to be able to answer any of those questions, and everything is in order. We've worked very closely with the city staff, and we're looking forward to this.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for the applicants?
Just your name?
McPherson. He actually got it right.
Just for the record.
Sorry. Bruce McPherson, 859 South Raymond, Pasadena, California.
Thank you.
So is this a...
Who's this question for?
I have a question for just staff. This is a recommendation to the city council. Are we find the finding and then it's a separate recommendation to the city council?
Yes. Google, heading forward.
So it's not a recommendation, per se?
You're not approving. This board, this commission is not approving it. You're making a recommendation to city council.
Okay, it's a recommendation.
Yes, that's what our...
It wasn't, that's not what it said exactly in the...
If I may, Chairman of the commission, it is a recommendation to the council, but the Planning Commission has by law to make the finding that's consistent with circulation element. So it's kind of a hybrid, if you will.
Okay, got it.
You're not approving the vacation.
Right, right.
Making the finding that's required by law.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure.
Any other questions for staff?
None.
See now, would someone like to make a motion then? Ms. Landrigan?
I move that upon consideration of vacation case number 150V, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said alley vacation, subject to compliance with State Government Code Section 65402 and Chapters 2.68 and 12.24 of the Glendale Municipal Code, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the city council approve Alley Vacation Case Number 150V based upon the following findings amended to include the one mentioning the engineering, Director of Engineering...
Director of Public Works.
...of Public Works, of fact and conditions.
Seeking support?
Second.
Ooh, that was close.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Shitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Yasayan?
Aye.
Chair Person Kane?
Aye. On a vote of four to zero, Planning Commission has made the findings and recommends that city council approve Alley Vacation Case 150V. We'll move on to Alley Vacation Case 168V, which is the portion of the alley located south of 600 East Broadway and north of 124 South Isabel Street, and runs east from Isabel Street to the north-south portion of the alley that connects to Harvard Street that will not be vacated. The applicant again is the city of Glendale. The proposal is to vacate a portion of an alley 20 feet wide by approximately 150 feet long located in the downtown specific plan civic center zone. The vacated alley will revert to the property owner at 600 East Broadway, which deeded the property originally. The recommendation of staff is that the Planning Commission make the findings and recommend that city council grant the vacation. Mr. Hamilton, there you are.
Chairman, members of the commission. The proposed alley in question is, is just a portion of the public alley that runs from Isabel down to Harvard. So we're only talking about vacating this east-west portion that lies sort of directly between 124 South Isabel and 600 East Broadway. The purpose of this is, the courthouse is hoping, planning to expand, and they need this land, including the alley, for their expansion purposes. The alleys, this alley in question is generally 20 feet wide and approximately 150 feet long for a total area of about 3,300 square feet. One interesting part of this that makes it somewhat easier is apparently this was entirely deeded to the city by the property to the north, so will not revert half and half to the adjoining properties. It'll revert back entirely to the property to the north. The, we've had no comments from other city departments other than Public Works, I mean, Glendale Water and Power Electric, who has recommended one of the conditions, which is attached in your motion, which is that the, not Public Works Electric, it is, it is actually Public Works. They want to replace the curb and gutter and sidewalk and remove the apron. We've also got a condition that should the expansion not occur in this property to the south at 124 not be acquired, then the vacation would not go through. So it's only going to go through if the courthouse actually does acquire the land and actually does do the development. Otherwise, it'll just stay a public alley. Staff recommends that this vacation be approved, that you make a recommendation for its approval. We think that the finding for consistency under the general plan circulation element can be made. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Baxter previously explained your responsibility, so I won't bother repeating all that.
Yes, sir.
Which property is the one that is conditioned to be, before this is done?
124 South Isabel. Their, my understanding is they're in negotiations to acquire that, but it's not completed yet, so that's why this is a conditional vacation. So the way the process would work, you would make your recommendation to council, make a finding of consistency. Council will set a hearing, hopefully next week. They'll actually have the hearing at the end of May to vacate or not, and presumably by then, they will find out for sure whether this will be necessary. But even at that point, I believe council will still have the authority to approve the vacation conditionally. So they could approve the vacation, but it might not, it still might not be recorded with the county, you know, and the property change hands if the full development does not occur. I think that's the plan by our engineer's office on how to manage this.
Is there, I'm just curious, is there a potential role for eminent domain if negotiations fail with that property?
I suppose potentially, but that's a legal question. I would defer to Mr. Garcia and other parties.
It's a negotiation between the, this is the Office of Administrative Courts and property owner, and my understanding is that that's not anticipated, all I can say.
Okay. All right.
What's, I mean, what's the point of having them do the alley way back then? Like, they can do the alley themselves, right? Be part of their own property.
So...
I don't get why they had to give it to the city now that they have to ask them to vacate.
If you look at the old sort of land arrangement, there used to be an alley that went all the way through to Broadway. So this is, I'm guessing, when they developed the courthouse site, the city vacated these alleys. Well, then there was no through access anymore. So I believe as part of that development...
The requirement was...
Well, the city negotiated. How about if we put the alley through over here?
Okay. Something like that.
Any other questions for staff at this time? I have no speaker cards, so unless there's other questions or comments from commissioners, I suppose we can move forward with the motion.
Okay. Go ahead. I move that upon consideration of vacation case number 168V, and after reviewing the records, files, and reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said alley vacation, subject to compliance with State Government Code Section 65402 and Chapters 2.68 and 12.24 of the Glendale Municipal Code, the Planning Commission hereby recommends that the city council approve Alley Vacation Case Number 168V based on the following findings of facts and conditions.
Second.
Motion, support call roll, please.
Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Shitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Yasayan?
Aye.
Chair Person Kane?
Aye. On a vote of four to zero, the Planning Commission has made the findings and makes recommendation to city council to approve Alley Vacation Case 168V. Moving on to Item C, Tenet of Track 71574 from 331 through 343 West Doran Street. It's APN 5637-002-69-068-067-071 and -070. The subdivider slash owners is HHP Duran LLC located on Fair Oaks Avenue in Pasadena. The proposal is to develop a 60-unit affordable home ownership project that includes the rehabilitation of three single-family dwelling units and construction of 57 new units with 118 parking stalls and a semi-subterranean garage. Lot is approximately 85,824 square feet, and it's located within the R-1250 high-density residential zone. Plan staff does recommend that the Tenet of Track be approved, and staff is represented by Eric Kraus?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and members of the commission, Mr. Chair. You've pretty much said everything, I think.
Why I do it? It moves it fast.
Yeah, so like I said, this Tenet of Track map, 71574, it's located at 331 through 343 West Doran Street, and the applicant is HHP Doran LLC. General plan is high-density residential on its zone, R-1250 high-density residential. The applicant is requesting approval of the Tenet of Track map to develop a 60-unit affordable home ownership project that includes the rehabilitation of three existing single-family dwelling units and construction of 57 new units with 118 parking stalls. The project site is located on five adjoining lots totaling approximately 1.97 acres. This is a joint-use project, or joint project between the developer and the housing authority of the city of Glendale to provide home ownership opportunities for residents within the city of Glendale. The proposed Tenet parcel map would result in two lots. Lot one would be approximately 70,000 square feet in size, and lot two would be approximately 17,000 square feet in size. Lot two is currently being developed with an approved 60-unit affordable home ownership project, and lot two would be developed as a public park. November 19th, 2008, a variance case number PVAR 2008, 027, was approved to allow the construction of a new condominium building whereby the semi-subterranean parking garage projects more than three feet above the average top of curb elevation and therefore is considered a four-story structure. And on November 19th, 2008, the project received approval from the zoning administrator for a parking concession pursuant to Chapter 3036, density bonus incentives of the Glendale Municipal Code for a reduction in code-required parking and the use of tandem spaces. So the project will provide 118 parking spaces that includes 24 sets of tandem spaces and a semi-subterranean parking garage with access from the public alley on the northern boundary of the project site. The project was approved by the Design Review Board on December 4th, 2008, and that was case number 1PDR 2008-60A. And on November 29th, 2010, variance case number PVAR 2010-001 was approved to allow the relocation of three existing single-family dwelling units to remain on the site but to encroach within the front yard setback, so they'll now be setback a minimum average of 16 feet 6 inches. The project does comply with all other zoning regulations. A mitigated negative declaration, case number PEIF 2008-005, was adopted by the zoning administrator on November 19th, 2008, and at this point, staff recommends that the Tenet of Track ... map number 71574 be approved, subject to compliance with State Subdivision Map Act Chapters 16.32 and 16.16 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code and the recommending conditions as attached to the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Landergan.
I am curious, why was the building permit issued on September 8, 2010, and the tenet of tract application filed on March 15, 2011? It's just, I don't, I would like to know that.
Why was it submitted on, what day? It wasn't submitted in 2008, the tenet of tract.
I think the question is, why did the permit issue before the application, the tract map application?
Exactly.
Why did the building permit?
It's actually built. It said a building permit...
Yeah, well, it's under construction.
A building is under construction. And why did that happen before the tenet of tract map?
Well, my understanding, and Laura might be able to address this a little bit better, but the city does allow you to move forward with building construction and pull building permits prior to actually submitting for tenet of tract map.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for people to come in and pull a building permit as an apartment, and then later, that's how they get a start on the construction. Later, they come in and modify their permit to a condominium, and that's what we have here.
So what happens if we don't approve it? It just becomes an apartment?
Essentially, yes.
Would that also take the lot to public park out of the equation, or is that already in place?
I believe that's already in place through development agreement.
Well, Mr. President, members of the commission, chair or president, I can't remember.
I'm looking for promotions. Emperor, Grand Poobah.
It's actually, this project was subject to a disposition development agreement between the housing authority and the developer, and the conveyance of the park is one of the, to the city, is one of the conditions of the agreement. So eventually, this will have to, some form of the conveyance will have to occur. It's true, it is a discretionary action, and it did come late in the process. Part of the reason being, in this particular case, it's happened in other cases, but this one particularly, because of the financing of this particular type of development, they really need to move quickly on starting construction, that sort of thing, and I think that's why this sort of preceded the tract map processing on this particular application.
And I would add, I don't believe that we have any different standards in our codes for apartments versus individual ownership, so it's not like anyone's trying to get away with anything by doing it that way.
There may be some minor changes, but not many.
The tract map is the only requirement for it that is different, because there was not a tract map required previously?
No, the tract map is required to be able to sell the units individually.
So if it was an apartment...
Individual ownership.
Apartment, you don't need a tract map, but if you wish it to be sold as individual units, it has to have a tenet of tract map.
Is a tenet of tract map correct?
That's correct. For condominiums. And that, when they come in for the plans, they might come in for an apartment, but the design of a building would meet the requirements of a condominium. So when they do change over, should you approve a condominium, it's relatively easy for them to do it. They just have to refile with, to modify their building permit and have it rechecked as a condominium.
And there are no different uniform building codes for condominiums as opposed to apartments? I think there are.
There are some changes. There are some changes. The main difference in our code relates to some of the noise attenuation and some of the storage requirements.
I don't think that, I think your question was on the uniform building code. I don't think there are differences between that. It's really related to our subdivision code and not anything different in the UBC or any other uniform codes.
Yeah, I was answering for Title 16. Title 16 has minor differences for subdivisions.
Are there a large number of these projects that go in, start out as apartments, a large percentage?
All of them.
And then become...
I think the majority start out as apartments, and then later, if they get a tenet of tract map approved, they'll come in and modify their building permit.
Yeah, I'm not really sure why they do that, but it seems like they all do that.
Yeah. I don't want to say all, but a number.
Well, good point.
Yeah.
And in this particular case, I mean, we can ask the applicant, but I believe that individual ownership is rather important to the...
Well, it's critical. It's required. I mean, that's the agreement the housing authority has with the developer. It has to be, it has to be an ownership project.
Affordable.
It's affordable. 57 of the 60 units will be affordable.
So originally, when they discussed this, they knew...
Yes.
The housing authority knew it was going to be an ownership project?
Correct.
So you would say that the city is in favor of it as an ownership project?
Yes.
Okay. So if you guys want to continue being commissioners...
Say that.
I can. I've got carte blanche now. Hold, hold. Ms. Landergan.
Excuse me, the point I was going to make is that the three historic houses that are being preserved will be sold at market rates, so actually having the ability to sell those individually is really crucial to the success of this project, and as a matter of fact, one of the reasons why this developer was selected is that it was their experience and their enthusiasm for historic preservation.
Mr. Sheets, you sounded like you had a question.
Yeah, so what, is there any condition where the park remains public even after it becomes a condominium? They don't gate it out? They can't gate it out?
No, they will not be able to get their final COO until they have conveyed that property to the city, so...
Oh, so it's just going to be...
Yeah, and once it's ours, it's ours. It won't be any additional condition required of the developer at that point.
Ms. Landergan.
I'm going back to my issue on the tenet of tract map. So the city already had this agreement when this went in as an apartment or whatever, and now, so this was known all along. My question is, is the code being used so that people can start building, and then they go through the necessary other regulations that are outside of the city, because the tenet of tract map is a state requirement, correct? Or is that a city requirement?
It's both, but it's really, it is required by state law.
So you can start your building and then do the harder stuff while you're building? I mean, I'm just curious. It seems to me that, kind of disingenuous, but, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking the process. I'm not making a judgment, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that question, other than to say it has been common, and in this particular case, we knew it was going to be an ownership project.
I'm still on it.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to determine the benefit, and I think Commissioner Landergan was going at, so the, one of the benefits is they can start the building earlier if they apply it as rental.
Yes.
So if they didn't go as rental property and went as ownership property, it would take longer to be able to start building. I guess if anybody can do this quickly, I'd be interested in what the gains and losses would be. I guess we've had this before, but I'm on the same page as far as the disingenuous.
I think, well, I don't know about the disingenuous part, but it truly is to, because of the paperwork and the time of preparing tract maps, it's truly just speed to market.
Okay, so there's no issue around requirements that the city might have based on building them as condos versus...
In fact, when they come in, I think either Tim or Eric mentioned, they'll come, they build them to condo standards, knowing that...
Okay, so the conditions about property they have to give for certain things and...
We, in years past, when, you know, from institutional memory, there have been situations where a property owner's come in, and they've kind of been put through the wringer over this process. And we've talked about conditions, and we've talked about other things, and I think in this particular example, given what the housing authority has been doing, I think it's been worked through very well on the part of the city, for this case. There have been others where it's literally, you know, a private apartment builder, market rates, and they've had a little fun with, or the commission has had some entertainment with them in terms of conditions and actually pushing forward the vote as it relates to the tenet of tract maps. Other, please.
Yes. I have a question. In here, in the requirements on page six, under the Public Works Maintenance Service Division, remove six existing street trees and then plant three street trees. Where are the six existing street trees that are going away?
I believe those are in the public right-of-way.
Well, I know, but...
In the green, in the green building.
I don't have a demo planner. If I do, I wasn't clear.
To be honest with you, I'm not really 100% certain. I mean, this is, the property, it's five lots wide, so, and there's, you know, three driveway apens and all that kind of stuff, so I'd imagine they're all just in line with, you know, the front of the property.
So the six trees have already been removed?
We would have to have the applicant address that question, I'm not sure.
Well, the reason I ask is I see several trees here on the last plan that looks the closest thing to landscape plan that I can see. I was just curious as to...
There's a larger landscape plan that's up behind you guys, yeah. I mean, it looks to me like there's a lot more than four trees going in.
Yeah, if you look at the parkway, it's worthy of asking the applicant if they're prepared to answer. You know, one of the, you know, and this would be an aside for staff, is, you know, everybody's big on trees and not losing trees, and I think I'm probably right in with the direction you're going at. When you have six and you're only allowing three, for example, in the City of Los Angeles, what they'll do is they may require 10 trees, and then the street people come out and go, well, there's not room for 10, but you still owe us 10. And they take those trees and they store them, and they're put somewhere else in the city. So right now, we've lost three trees in the City of Glendale with this deal, or at least it appears to be based on the condition.
Public mature trees that add canopy and shade reduction and oxygen mitigation and natural services benefits that are almost hard to quantify.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't speak on behalf of the Public Works Department as to why they were only requesting that many trees, but...
Well, it's just an aside for people to file away. Any other questions for staff at this time?
Well, can we find out if, are we going to go to the applicant?
Yes. And whether they're prepared or whether they have the facts at hand, we'll find out. We'll make it a mystery.
Sure.
Anything else for staff at this time? All right, we have a couple speaker cards. We have the applicant, Elia Chavez. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, all I know is that they identify themselves as the applicant. That's what I'm going from.
That's just the applicant.
Ms. Chavez, are you an applicant or an interested party, or what are you?
Yes, I'm an applicant. I'm just not able to...
Okay, I'm thinking, okay, I'm thinking you misunderstood how to fill this in. You will have the opportunity to speak, but it'll be a little, excuse me, it'll be in just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
So let's try Charles, and the way the last name ran through, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, so please help me out on that.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Charles Loveman. I'm the executive director of Heritage Housing Partners. We're the applicant and the developer of this project, or we're the managing member of the entity that's developing this. We've actually been working with, in partnership with the City of Glendale since the fall of 2005 on this project, so this has taken a long, long time to get to where we are. And the short answer about the tenet of tract map coming after the building permit is we probably did it the wrong way around, but as Mr. Garcia said, we had a very unusual funding source, a federal tax credit that, I think this is only the second time that this tax credit's been used for affordable home ownership housing, and it has a requirement that once that tax credit funds, it has to be spent with a certain, within a certain number of months. So once we got the building permit, we wanted to go, and we kind of knew we were doing it backwards, but this was always contemplated to be a home ownership project. The plans and specs and the building department approval are as a home ownership project. In fact, this is a project where we've been working for quite some time with Glendale Water and Power to exceed Title 24 standards by about 30% or so. So it's certainly built to the highest level of condo standards in terms of noise attenuation and energy uses and so forth. But in a perfect world, we would have done the tract map prior to pulling the permit, but really, that was an issue related to funding. On the street tree issue, I don't, we have not taken out any street trees, so I couldn't tell you that there's six street trees on the parkway. I'm not familiar with the rationale from Public Works for that condition, but to the best of my knowledge, we have not needed to take any street trees out of the parkway, and I'm mystified by that condition as well. I guess I'll say a little bit more about, this was always envisioned to have, so it's always envisioned to be a 60-unit home ownership project with 57 of the units to be sold at affordable prices, and then the three historic rehabs to be sold at market rate. We're working our way towards the Historic Preservation Commission of the city with the Mills Act application, as well as a certificate of appropriateness, I suppose, is what the approval would be there in terms of what we're doing with the rehabs. The 57 affordable units are going to be home ownership. The average sales price is going to be around $250,000. They go from one-bedroom units up to four-bedroom units, but most of the units are two- and three-bedroom units. We are getting a lot of applicants for the units, so I'm not sure if that's the confusion here. I think we have 205 completed applications for those 57 units as of this afternoon. The park was really part of an open space requirement that we had to do, and so instead of paying an open space fee, it was determined early on that we would develop a park, an open space, that we would deed over to the city for a dollar at the completion of the project. So the open space slash public park has been, the design details have been worked out with the Parks Department over a number of years to make sure it complies with Parks' standards, so that when they take title to it, it'll meet their requirements. And otherwise, I hope the conditions are actually, since we've been through so many different approvals already, these conditions have, there's no new conditions that we haven't seen that I'm aware of. The street tree condition was probably in there before, and I didn't pay attention to it. And we're really in big trouble if you don't approve this, because our funding does not allow these units to be rented.
It's our favorite place to be in this situation.
Me too.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions. Our civil engineer is here as well, if you need to have questions answered about the specifics of the tract map itself.
Before I ask commissioners for questions, for the record, I do have his card on file, and if we need to speak to him, he'll be able to come forward.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, questions for the applicant? This has nothing to do with the tenet of tract map, but I'm curious. You've got so many applications for so many spots, how do you vet them?
Well, that's a great question. We sort of, we send them, we do really a three-step process. Step one is to make sure they're income-qualified, because this is an income-restricted program. So we make sure that they meet the income rules that the housing department and the state of California lay out. The second thing is we make sure that they are credit-worthy in terms of being able to get a mortgage, and then if they pass those two thresholds, we interview them. So we'll take all of the two-bedroom buyers who have passed those first two, and we'll interview them and rank them, and then we'll make a recommendation to the city saying these are the top applicants. If we have more applicants than we have units, then it becomes a lottery after the interview process.
Is there a zip code bias for Glendale?
There's a preference for Glendale residents, correct.
How is that weighted?
I don't know the exact details, but there's a point system.
There is a point system. It's not just by gosh and by golly, you have a criteria.
Right. We had a marketing plan that had to be approved by city council, and the application and the scoring criteria were part of that, so we set the scoring criteria up in partnership with the city well before we put the application out on the street.
All right. Please, Ms. Landergan.
I have a couple of questions. There will be an HOA?
Yes.
And that HOA will have CCNRs?
Yes.
And those CCNRs will make reference to the Mills Act and covenant the historic preservation elements of these three homes?
I don't know if the Mills Act will show up in the CCNRs, but the Mills Act will, those three homes will have a, the CCNRs will recognize that those three historic homes have a different set of rules than the 57 new units.
They will, so they're not going to be part of the HOA?
They are going to be part of the HOA. I just don't know honestly whether the Mills Act, the reference to the Mills Act occurs in the CCNRs or not.
And there would be a Mills Act contract for each property, so that would be recorded against the property, recorded against the three units, even if they're not part of the HOA.
I mean, those three properties should have different maintenance fees, a whole different program.
Exactly. So since they're detached units as opposed to attached units, their HOA fee structure will be different.
And does the city have the right to review the CCNRs before they go into effect?
Yes, and it's actually a condition of these, of this approval, that we will review those.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Mr. Sheets.
There's nothing in this process that the city doesn't have the right to.
We're trying to find it, Mr. Sheets.
My question is, you talked about working with what used to be called Parks and Recreation Department. Did you also go before the Parks... Did you also go before the Parks and Recreation Commission and what happened there?
I think it went to Parks on a kind of advisory basis.
That's correct. And it also went to the council for formal approval of the park as well. So, we tried to take this project to every commission.
That's good. Well, and the parks are really in tune to what's happening with parks and where the demands are and what the needs are. So, I'm sure that they would have been able to give very positive input as to what the park is, what it represents and how it meets needs.
And our landscape architect was a firm that has done a couple of other pocket parks for the city, so they are also familiar with the design requirements and the usage and
I have an unrelated question to the tentative tract map. When the person, if somebody buys this at an affordable price, can they resell it at a market price?
There's a, the answer is no. Well, I should say, there's the option, the city has the option to either buy it at a future affordable price or let it go to market. If the city chooses to let it go to market, there's an equity share, profit sharing, so the city gets the money back. But chances are, at least in the early years, the city would be exercising its right of first refusal to keep the unit affordable. That's our expectation.
And there's a timeframe before it could go to market anyway, right?
Well, it's a 45-year covenant and there's a, one of the funding sources is some, so we got federal tax credit, state money and city money. And the state money has a five-year lockout, if you will, before going to market. But the city has that option for a full 45 years to keep it affordable.
Is there somebody else, Ms. Landerga?
I actually would like to ask the engineer a question.
All right, if you could step forward, sir, and then just share your name.
I'm Cliff Semintal with Somus. I'm actually the surveyor on the site, not the engineer.
All right. Well, Somus does engineering, so maybe you know the answer. It's a very nice plan laid out. It has a lot of open space. And the green building code is coming into effect. Do you know if the drainage and the subsurface and surface issues were addressed in a more sustainable way as opposed to being pipe to, pipe to somewhere, sewer?
Yeah, I doubt he'd be.
Burgen, you want to take this?
I don't know if the surveyor will know this, but you probably know some.
Talk to us about SUSEM.
Well, so if you look at the one courtyard, sort of in the lower-left quadrant, so you have the three historic rehabs to the southwest corner. And then behind that is a courtyard. All of the surface drainage drains to that courtyard and there's a giant sort of discharge, subterranean discharge facility there, so it recharges. If it overflows, then it goes out to the street.
It's like a Bakudo or a torrent system or you don't know?
I don't.
Like a sister.
Yes, cistern. And I think it's actually, well, if we're not the first, we're one of the first to do that in the city because we got a lot of attention from Public Works when we were installing that system.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions for the applicant at this moment? All right, we have two other speaker cards. Ms. Chavez, this is your chance to chat with us for a few moments.
My name is Elia Chavez and I'd like to apply for the Glendale Doran Gardens.
You say you'd like to apply?
Yeah, I'd like to apply.
All right. Well, obviously, that doesn't come in front of us, but this gentleman right behind you, I think, is going to give you a business card or someone to contact and you'll be able to pursue that. Unless you have other remarks, I'll just suggest best of luck in being able to qualify.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Milano, looking for an application?
Wish I could apply at those rates, yes. Commissioners, my name is Herbert Milano. I want to address to you a couple of concerns that I have with regard to this development. First of all, I want to say something positive about it because I think it is a really nice touch that instead of spreading out the open space elements so that it's, you know, all throughout the property, that it be concentrated as it was in this case. And to be able to provide the general community with an open space, and I think that's a, I think is a great idea. But we cannot forget that they did receive $5.4 million as well from the redevelopment So, kudos, yes, but we did wind up using taxpayer money for this thing. What I want to address are a couple of issues. First of all, this particular project, to my calculation, has about 142 bedrooms. Most of them are two- and three-bedrooms, most of the units, and it's a condominium. That means that people are going to be living there and if they are children, well, in 10 years or so, they could be adults buying their own car. The issue I have is with the tandem parking and the variance or the concession that was given with regard to parking. Because it's something that I've seen project after project after project. And some of you know I own income property nearby, recreational planning area 10. And my tenants are having a hell of a time, horrific time, finding adequate parking, especially for guests. And as these projects, when the original, the building that I have, when it was originally purchased, when I originally purchased it, it almost was practically new. There was plenty of parking for guests and throughout it was never an issue. But as more and more buildings come up with fewer and fewer, or more and more variances, it got to the point where it's really getting intolerable. I've been presenting this issue to the Traffic and Parking Commission. I have been requesting that surveys be done along these roads at a certain time of the night, for example, at 7:00, to see if there is on-street parking. Because I can guarantee you, on many of the streets, come 7:30, 8:00, you cannot find any parking. And on street cleaning days, it's a nightmare. The, my building is close to the GUSD and most tenants wind up moving their cars over to their parking overnight, violating whatever rules they have. But that's the extent parking on the alleys as a way of avoiding the tickets that are generally coming because the police comes in right after that on that street sweeping day. But, so my issue I have is the following. It's, these children will eventually grow up, they will have their own cars because we don't have the kind of transportation you have in other major cities. And the reality is, is that even though many of this parking may not initially be used for some of these families, they will eventually be used. But tandem parking is a significant irksome issue for me. Because for many, if you've got teenagers in a two-car garage, you know how difficult it is to try to put one car inside cars parked on the outside. It just doesn't work that well. Tandem parking has been used as an excuse to allow this ratio to be bypassed. And I think that the, that this commission should truly reconsider. Maybe it's too late for this project, it's already started, already building. But I think that, you know, it should be addressed. Tandem parking just increases the amount of overflow to the street parking and it creates a nightmare for the rest of the residents. The negative declaration that was made in 2008, it perhaps did not consider this issue, but I think it's a quality of life issue that impacts the rest of the neighborhood. And I think that the developers should address this as to why it was appealed or presented this way. I know it reduces costs, it's major, you know, maybe to $20,000 to $30,000 per slot. But at the end of the day, what we are impacting this community is something fierce, really, really bad. And I want to start addressing and perhaps you'll see more of me for any of these projects that are coming along here because it really is a problem. And my tenants don't know enough to basically come here and say, "Join me and appeal to you for some consideration with regard to the issue of tandem parking and then continual variances that are being given." Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. It's kind of an interesting process. We don't really have, let me put it to you this way. I know staff may have some closing remarks. I'm going to give the applicant just a moment to, I'll call it rebuttal for lack of a better phrase, but I'd like to hear you talk a little bit about the parking process and what you went through and that type of stuff, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. I appreciate it. Well, we are a nonprofit affordable homeownership developer. What we notice in the projects that we've completed, and we're housing low and moderate income households. So, what we noticed in the project that we've completed is the rate of car ownership for low and moderate income households is probably a little less than what you'd see for a market rate project. In our other projects, the usage is probably about 2/3 of what code requires. So, we have 118 spaces for 60 units, so it's just shy of two spaces per unit. And based on our past experience, I would expect that we will not use all the spaces.
How many three-bedroom units?
It's in the staff report. I should know that by heart. 15 three-bedrooms.
15. Oh, there it was.
Table one.
I have a general question. In discussing the park, if I'm not mistaken, this is relatively close to Columbus School, elementary school. And my recollection is that there's a significant project going on with Columbus Elementary School and the Parks Department as far as open space. Are you aware of that or was there any discussion with the Parks Department and/or the commission in relationship or association with that or collaboration?
Not specifically, I'm not aware of any specific discussions about Columbia, although we certainly oriented the park to younger, to kids, younger and a little bit older.
And the two spaces, another question, the two spaces per unit includes the tandem spaces, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Which, again, we typically try and do tandem in our affordable housing projects. The gentleman is right, I mean, that's just a way to save costs. And we just, because it's, because it's an affordable project, because it is what it is, we just don't get a lot of pushback on that.
If I was you, I'd use them also, but it's, but it's, it is a problem. Tandem parking has this limitation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Closing remarks from staff?
Just, well, a couple things. The parking was discussed in the original environmental document. So, we used a kind of, the information we had was for a parking demand analysis that was, that was done at two projects located in the city of Glendale and three in the city of LA that kind of went through the process of how much parking, affordable housing projects typically would use. And so, that was completely evaluated in the environmental document. And then also, under like state density bonus, you know, as long as a project implies or is, meets the requirements of being considered affordable housing project under density bonus ordinance, there's ratios that the state sets for parking that the city is essentially obligated to, to provide to the applicant at a lower, they're lower ratios than would typically be done for a market rate project. So, those are something that's delegated by the state. And then also, and talking about parks, there's a, right now on the table, there's a proposed soccer facility for Columbus School, elementary school. It'd be a joint-use project between the city of Glendale Parks Department and the Glendale Unified School District to allow a soccer field on the site of Columbus Elementary School that would be open to the public after school hours and on the weekends and then for use for the school during the school hours. So, right now, there's an environmental impact report out for that project. It's currently under.
You mentioned the parking study.
Yes.
Was the intent of that to study or determine what other developments used or what the success rate was or the performance was of the parking that they had?
It evaluated how much parking affordable housing projects would typically use based on the unit count and the different types, whether one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, that sort of thing.
So, my point is still, it wasn't, they weren't studying parking, they were studying what was used.
No, they were studying a parking demand for affordable housing projects. That's all I have at this point, unless there's any other questions.
All right. Commissioners, questions to staff, questions to the applicant? If not, we'll move into deliberations or comments.
I'll start. It still feels awkward. We're kind of like, most of this is already, a lot of this is done, work's been done, it's moving along. And I see no reason that this isn't going to work. But there were some comments made that kind of allows me some soapbox time. I wish and I would like to see in the future that we work, this would have been a perfect time to maybe work with the park. And if you did that, that's great relative to the soccer field. But I don't know enough about the relationship of the two structures, so it's just a thought, kind of an afterthought that I had. But the real key here, and I want to speak to it because I wasn't real happy when we approved the parking standards for downtown and we've enhanced the use of tandem parking and cut back on parking. And one of the speakers had mentioned what I think is going to be one of the real issues. I don't have any problem with having parking standards and trying to work towards fewer cars parking. Something's got to change, but there have to be other components. And it was mentioned that the transportation system we have today is not adequate. The rapid transit system, the way to get people around is not there. So, consequently, developers will use these standards because they can and because it's smart business, but it will just compound the problem we already have, which was my sense when we did the downtown parking improvement. So, on one side, I understand the studies and I understand the history, but I think the examples that were used had different kinds of transportation systems. If you take us back about 50, 60 years and if we had the red line downtown, I think it's going to work because that's what we need today. So, I guess as suggested by one of the speakers, we need to look at that and we need to think about projects in the future with that in mind. And I have to admit, the issue about the parks and open space that was brought up, although it was on oral communications, it's relative to this project. And when I was on the Parks Commission, when we did the recreation element, and felt very strongly that it wasn't going to get it for the reasons that were stated. We don't have enough parks and making them happen is going to be literally impossible at this rate. But we need to look at the parking when we approve these projects. We need to look at the open space. And I think we need to be smarter about it on one side, but we also need to understand it needs to get better. So, that's my soapbox. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets.
I'm happy to go next.
Please.
I know that we're not, it's not our purview, but I think the layout with the quads and the open space and the actual architectural quality of this project is commendable. It looks to me like it's going to be well greened up. I'm thrilled to hear that you're working with Kavanabe. They've done wonderful work in dealing with sustainably using landscape to respond to low-impact development. And I was happy to hear you say that. Think that, you know, I've already raised my concerns with sort of the process that we allow and even encourage. And I understand that, you know, with the funding issues, that's probably why this exists. I think it's a handsome-looking project. I think it's a great project. It's going to add more parkland and I will support it. And do agree that we need to look at the parking issue. I think we've all raised that before. There is the presumption that low-income folks have fewer cars. And I don't know how sustained that is.
Five and $6 gas will help that.
Well, it is helping it a little bit, but it really hasn't cut down on traffic. There's still, I still see those same people out there on the road that you'd think they would stop, but they haven't.
Isn't it the same thing about you?
I have a Prius, so.
Yeah, that's true.
I get more on that gas than some. But it is an issue. I think that, and I raised the same issue as Commissioner Sheets at the time, that we need to also put money into improving our transit system so that this type of variance and reduction is supported by another infrastructure that allows you to get around.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burgen. Ms. Guzain?
I don't really have anything more to add than what was said. I do also support the track map.
All right. Um, I guess my only comment would be, uh, that at some point, there are gonna be straws breaking a camel's back, to use the cliches, as it relates to parking. We keep saying it, we keep seeing individual projects being brought forward, and sooner or later, well, I think we're past that point in many areas of town, despite what we went through with the, with the Transportation Commission recently, in terms of parking reductions and so on. You know, overall, it paints a pretty picture, but there are hotspots. And this may be creating or, or increasing the, the heat intensity of a particular area. But we also have a couple elements coming into conflict. We have the transportation element versus the housing element. And this has gone through and been very well-reviewed by the city staff. There is, there is clearly a, a marching order afoot that, that has deemed this to be an acceptable project. I think the conditions that were put in place were well-considered, and as such, you know, I would obviously be in favor of approving the, the tentative tract map. Further comments? If not, a motion, please?
I just wanna add one thing.
Sure.
It's that, you know, we complain about how state requirements affect what we do, and there are state limitations, or, or reductions that are allowed for affordable housing that kind of supersede city needs. And, um, so somehow or another, those, you know, if you're gonna be having those conflicts, I think they have to be addressed in our parking plan, so that we need to address affordable housing and how that affects that. And, and I don't know, I don't remember us addressing that, I just wanted to bring that up.
All right, thank you. Motion, please?
I'll move that upon consideration of the tentative tract map number 71574, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all document, all documentary evidence submitted with regard to this said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 71574 is hereby approved, subject to the compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16 dot 1.6, and 16 dot 3.2 of Title 16 of Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of Glendale Municipal Code, and 54, and the 54 additional conditions listed below. And the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings as stated in the motion.
I think you should read each of the conditions.
Should I do that?
Oh.
Your favorite ones.
Selective.
Point out your top 10.
Top five, left few.
Top five, top 10. All right, we have a motion seeking support.
Second.
Well, you can read them then.
Uh, we have a motion, support call roll, please.
Commissioner Landregan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets?
Aye.
Commissioner Guzain?
Aye.
Chairperson Kane?
Aye, and a vote of four to zero, the Planning Commission has approved tentative tract 71574. Let's move on to Planning Division updates.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we do have a walk-on item here.
I'm sorry?
We do have a walk-on item here. Resolution of the Planning Commission, thanking Mr. Kane for his service.
I'll see if I have anything to disagree with here. Humane judgment. You realize I'm a general contractor, right?
So it reads, whereas Mr. Kane-
What, you object to the humane part or the judgment part?
Whereas Mr. Kane has completed years of service to the City of Glendale as a member of the Planning Commission, as well as of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and whereas Mr. Kane's experience in construction and development have brought a practical perspective to the commission's deliberations, and whereas Mr. Kane has helped lead the review of major policy initiatives, such as the downtown specific plan, the housing element, the town center specific plan, and substantial revisions of the zoning and subdivision ordinances, and whereas Mr. Kane has repeatedly been elected Chair of the Commission by his fellow commissioners, and has shown a mastery of procedures and of effective decision-making, and whereas Mr. Kane has demonstrated thoughtful, fair, and humane judgment, the commissioners can strike that if you wish. And the review of matters before the commission, now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale, that the commission extends to Mr. Kane sincere appreciation for the years of service so gratuitously given.
I would like to complain that I, he, there's a piece of Mr. Kane missing from here.
We're happy to take amendments, ma'am.
That he has also brought thoughtful, fair, and humane judgment and humor.
Ah.
Which would be very nice to add in there, because he has truly brought a very good sense of humor to many of our deliberations. And with that addition somehow in there, I would like to-
So moved, in a second.
Move that we, thank you, Mr. Kane, very much.
Thank you for not making it sick humor or questionable humor, and leaving it where it was. Thank you on that. Okay, well, great. Anything else from staff at this moment?
Um, the only other announcement we have is that we have Greg Astorian, who has been nominated to be on the, on the commission as a replacement. So he will be the new member.
Assuming he takes the oath.
Assuming he takes the oath, correct.
And it does require formal approval of the council as well.
Yeah.
Has it been approved yet?
Comes back next week.
Back next week.
Comments from commissioners?
Uh, yeah, I do have one comment, a question. You know, I think the city has a law against shopping carts. It's against, if it's outside. And I've been seeing a couple, a number of shopping carts, and is wondering where you report that, or, or what happens, and I think the store is actually responsible for that, right?
It should be reported at Neighborhood Services. The, the individual store operators are required to contain them on their site, and there's a couple steps they have to do. But that, if there are issues with shopping carts that you're aware of, or anybody's aware, that you should report to Neighborhood Services, them to follow up.
And their number is 548-3700.
I'll get it later. Uh, and my second comment is, the billboard that was placed on Broadway, um, at the Hollywood Building on Broadway and Louise, I think, I think it was placed illegally, and it's still there, it's been there for about two months now, and I was wondering what the update or status is on that.
Actually, we have received complaints, we're looking into it. I believe that there actually was a permit issued for that, so I'm not sure that it actually is illegal, but we are checking it out.
Seems a little bit uncharacteristic of-
I believe they received a variance.
It's, there's a variance?
I believe they received a signed variance.
Is it a billboard or just an onsite sign?
Yeah, it's, it's, it is an, it is a sign advertising the business, which is there, onsite, so. It's large, large, it's a large scale, which may make someone think of billboard, but it's not an off-site signage.
So, a signed variance, and where do they get that from?
The redevelopment agency. City Council acting as a redevelopment agency.
And that's like a permanent sign that they can have?
We're checking to make sure that the sign that's up there is in conformance with what was approved. Yes.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners? Mr. Sheets?
Yeah, I'll make, uh, I'll make a comment. We spoke tonight a lot about parks, so I would like to get a little press time for the Parks and Open Space Foundation, and make mention that this, last Sunday, we had our second event, which was a 10K run hike in Brand Park. A lot of walking instead of running, because of the uphill terrain. But, I have to say, it was our, it was the first 10K that we've put on, the event had over 500 participants. It was a wonderful event, had people from everywhere that showed up, in all, all shapes and sizes. And I think it's a good example of what the future holds for the foundation and the kind of things that we can do, and the money that we gain in the foundation will go to support park efforts, and enhance the monies and the funds that, that the city may not be able to bring about. So, not only was I there, but Commissioner Landregan was there, and she did her normal wonderful job at promoting the foundation. So it was a great event, and if we get a chance, not only to be, participate in it, but just to be there. The venue at Brand Park was wonderful, set up booths and, and such. In the teahouse area, it was well-shaded, and families just decided to stay. The children were there, they played, it was a great event, so it's something to look forward to in the future.
And, and I would just like to add, that it had a diversity of age. We had, I think, the youngest runner was six.
Six to 84.
And the oldest runner was 84. So, anybody can do it, just need a little training.
Awesome.
That's it.
Um, all right, I have a, I have a couple remarks, since this appears to be my last session as the chairman, and I can't remember where it came from, whether it was a work of literature or a comic book I read, or whatever, but after looking at the agenda we had tonight, I can say that this ends not with a roar, but with a whimper. And, um, I'm kinda reminded, you know, I've had all these thoughts going through my mind, you know, that maybe I'm like MacArthur, you know, where old planning commissioners don't die, they just fade away. We'll see if that one comes about. Staff, over the last few years especially, just keep, to me, keeps becoming better and better, more polished, or more honed. The, the instances where we've taken umbrage or, or pointed out shortcomings is modest indeed. They, they do occur, but I think if I was gonna grade staff, you'd be getting at least a 95 out of me, and I'm a pretty tough grader. It's been a great experience, you're, you know, usually without fail, well-prepared, and just very impressed with, with where Glendale is, in terms of the planning or the community development, or whatever the name is of the department this week. Commissioners, I've been between BZA and Planning Commission. I've been doing this probably, probably close to 13-plus years. And, um, I've always been impressed that in all that time, and all those commissioners, with, with only one exception, they've been just incredibly involved, well-thought, well-prepared people. And, um, the, the people I'm serving with right now, Stephanie, and Hank, and Eric, you are not an exception to the rule. You guys are just tremendous. The, the values you bring, the perspectives, it really points out to the value of five people from different backgrounds, you know, bringing things in front of them. So that's been, you know, a, a, just a great experience, and something I've really enjoyed through the years. You know, when I first came on, there was the old application, where it was like two city council members, and agonizing, and finding people to serve, and so on. And, and that was, that had its flaws. It, and of course, then back then, it was also six years and you're out. So the new process, where you, where there's a council member and you're kind of accountable to them, kind of leaves it open-ended, which is kind of great. In fact, it's, it's allowed me to serve probably a year longer than I could've with term limits. But it also kind of puts us in an interesting position, that now we're all truly political appointees. And I don't know about how you guys have been, but I know in my experience, I never got a call from my, my council member. I don't know if it's because he fully agreed with me, or whether he felt that laissez-faire was an appropriate, you know, way of dealing with it. But, um, to this point anyway, even though we're political appointees, I, my experience has been the council members are letting commissioners do what they think is right. And, and the reason it was triggered was, I think, back with some design review boards that seemed to be a little out there. So, political appointees aside, it seems like it's still working. The only two things I want to say is, with the new commissioner, I don't want to see any hazing, okay? No whoopee cushions, you know, no tie into a tree, don't make him carry the senior commissioner's books to the car, you know, let's, let's, let's knock that off. And, and I really look forward to the campaign season to see who'll be the chairperson elected next week. So, with that said, been a great experience. I look forward to somebody making a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
That was great.